Well, I was just going to say that we have a lot of stuff. So, we also have a lot of things that we have to do. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. We have to do a lot of things. Yeah. So, beginning with the board, I'm glad you all are here. Um, I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes of October fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll motion approve.
Uh, is there a second?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor? That's unanimous? Um, Maya, if you would take us through old business.
Okay. So, what we have under old business, uh, the lakes of Statham, uh, final plat approval with all, um, the bonds and stuff, so it comes with planning a bit more.
I've actually drafted a resolution for this little bit question about what we're doing. It is not an approved final plat. Now, from the hand down, then are we this resolution to draw this request? Because, uh, attorney, they are here. It says, whereas the ALA Lakes of Statham LLC, A- ALA, the owner and current developer of the Lakes of Statham subdivision, Salem, Georgia, is seeking to finalize this supplemental for final plat approval, whereas based upon documents ALA has submitted, the representation to its employees, agents, and representatives made to the city, and the city's representatives, as of the date of this resolution, ALA has taken the necessary steps other than executing and funding certain cash bond documents. And whereas these are denominated as the lake pump bond, five thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, the street top code catering performance cash bond, seventy-three thousand dollars, and a cash bond document for public improvements, two hundred nineteen thousand five hundred dollars collectively, cash bond documents. Whereas the city attorney has reviewed the cash bond documents and is currently drafted, has determined that the cash bond documents are in proper form, now therefore be resolved that upon proper execution and funding with cash, and the amounts reflected on their face, the city will accept the cash bond documents as reviewed by the city staff and approved by the city attorney. This is not approved final plat, uh, they're not, that's not what they're trying to do. It's just simply, uh, states of the city who wanted to accept those cash bond documents as they are currently drafted. It's just a step towards that, uh, process.
And, um, if the council wants to take action, what is the correct phrasing?
It would just simply be a motion, but not the rest motion.
Okay. Do you want to have a motion?
I have a question, Charles. Um, I noticed, are, are the reps here from the Lakes of Statham?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a question, um, about the lake, the lake pump bond, and we have another subdivision in Statham here that, that recently flooded out, and, um, there were a couple of residents in their yards that were, uh, completely displaced. It was, it was a big mess. Uh, we ended up, um, finally figuring out what to do about the lake. Are there safeguards or precautions in place for the community to take ownership of the lake, or has that all been squared away, uh, as far as, as far as you guys know, or have y'all not dealt with that yet?
Yes, we, we've, I'm Brad Hutchins, I'm the attorney for ALA Lakes of Statham. We, we have dealt with that, and there's, and I can't recall off the top of my head, Thomas, maybe you, I don't have the final plat, we've all been looking at it, kind of working off of in front of me, but my recollection is that the lake is going to be owned by the community. Is that right? I believe so. And then the pump bonds are for the purposes of, if there's any problems with the lake, or there's any problems with the sewer line that's out there, the bonds are in the, in the amount of enough to drain the lake and take care of repairs, uh, I think two or three times.
Twice.
Twice.
You pay for draining the lake twice, you know, there's, there's a sewer line in the, in the dam, uh, and it was, doesn't violate the law, uh, it's not best practices, um, but previous code, previous inspector passed on it.
And that was done, and that was done by another developer, not us.
Yeah, it wasn't this developer.
Before, before, before the downturn. And so what we're doing is trying to come in and put up enough money with the bonds to make sure that if what that other developer did was technically legal, if there's a problem with that, there's enough money there to fix that at least two times.
Okay.
Okay?
We have a motion.
I'll make the motion, we have got the resolution for Lakes of Statham.
And I'll second.
All four?
Same.
Uh, three, uh, we're four, it's one, uh, Ms. Betty, that's standing. All right. Um, and if you'll take us through new business.
Uh, under new business, um, we talked about last week, uh, the Christmas gift cards that is, um, in the, uh, to approve.
Uh, this cash here, it was thirty-five dollars, uh?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a, uh, first off, do we need discussion? Is there anybody that's unclear?
Fifty. Why would you divide it into fifty?
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'd like a, a motion, please?
For fifty.
Fifty.
All right, and a second?
I'll second it.
All four?
Yeah.
Uh, it's unanimous? Okay, um, is Joe Piper here?
Yeah.
There he is. Come on up, Joe. Uh, by the way, uh, the, uh, citizen concerns inputs are limited to five minutes. Not that we've ever gone over.
No, I like it short and sweet. I already addressed everyone last week, uh, the importance that I feel of having, uh, personal life separate from business, and I think that it is important, and I've spoken with other municipalities of approximately the same size, some little smaller, some a little smaller, uh, but it is a general practice. I think it's a good idea, and the other thing, uh, I've had a lot of requests, I've been doing some things that, uh, in lieu of Mayor Bridges, uh, stepping down at the end of the year, some of the things he's passed on to me, so I've been in some committee. I'd like to have a email set up before the end of the year, uh, so that I can start handing that out to the appropriate people as well. So, I know it's a little bit of an expense, but, uh, to keep the separation, I think it would be a, a wise move for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I spoke to the city administrator today about this, and they, uh, Mr. Piper, Mr. Venable talked to me about this last week as well, I wanted to take a look at, um, something. You see, I think it's, there's no problem with it, I did, uh, haven't had a chance to talk with them, I do think that the signature lines, there need to be signature lines on their email, it needs to be clear that they are, uh, mayor and council member-elect, and so that there's no, no, no citizen can ever misconstrue or, or think that, that they're mis, they're misrepresenting themselves, I'm not so concerned about the city, I'm concerned about allegations made against them, uh, sadly, but, um, in, in other contexts, I've taken the position that, that the actions of those that are preparing to take office, it's clear that they are, um, the, uh, one thing to be sworn in, if those, if those efforts in preparation, um, are appropriate, uh, to be done in the context, I think it's fine, um.
Have you already done that, Kay?
No.
Okay, you can do that.
Yeah.
And if you can, just, you know, on, soon after January first, if you can, move the, the name lineup over so that the, uh, so that indicates that they are the, the mayor.
What shows that, huh?
Great. Thank you. Uh, Gary Venable?
It is Gary Venable, twenty twenty-one, Broad Street, Statham. I spoke with you all on Thursday about, um, setting up an appointment, um, with our congressional auditors in January. I didn't know if we needed to do an actual level of that, but I requested that, um, we have a meeting set up with, uh, our all-inver as soon as possible in January, so that we can have a work session, basically.
Yeah, and Maya, if I'm correct, the mayor said that he was going to set that up?
The mayor? I was.
Oh, you were.
Uh, yeah, I contacted them, and, uh, we're just trying to get a date together, so as soon as I get a date, well, get it done.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Catherine Corpin?
I have to speak tonight on a few different things. First will be the, for the sunshine walls, and this is a copy for each of you. Uh, we have a settlement offer that's being presented to you tonight, having to do with the open meetings lawsuit that you're currently involved in. And I'll start again, as usual, um, by saying this is again, in a legal meeting. Why isn't it a legal meeting? It's explained in that paperwork that I just gave to you. Um, for one reason, um, this meeting is what's considered a regularly held meeting every month, it has a specific date and time. Um, the law requires that the actual date, time, and place of the meeting be publicized both on the city website and on the bulletin board outside, seven days per day. That has never been the case, not ever a single time. Your city attorney has been advising that it's okay just to say third Tuesday of the month, and that's not the case. Um, Supreme Court, uh, of Georgia has already ruled on this case, that makes this meeting and every meeting that the city has ever had illegal. But at any rate, this, uh, settlement is for you to consider, I imagine that it will be turned down, however, it's only, it's about a ninety-seven percent discount over what a judge will absolutely find against the city of Statham if this goes to trial. So, it would be very cool to show you to turn it down, but that'll be up to you.
So, what are you asking for?
Um, if you'll give me a minute, I'll answer questions at the end, uh, since I might have limited time. Um, so, going back to the ethics ordinance hearing, um, I wanted to explain something that I didn't get to explain in that hearing, um, having to do with the ordinance that talks about the appearance of wrongdoing, Ms. Wild. Um, you definitely should have been found guilty of that if nothing else. Because you admitted that, because you admitted that on the stage.
You said that at the, at the thing, and that's fine. Can you just repeat?
Thank you, I'm going on. Um, and one very way to, good way to illustrate that was when you did the first witness kind of call, and that was Mr. Jackson. Um, Mr. Jackson had an opportunity to have something that would not have necessarily been wrong, um, but it would have looked wrong to all citizens of Statham, uh, when he was issued a citation for, uh, code violation. Alan Johnston offered to dismiss that for him. That's entirely unethical. Um, now, would it have necessarily been wrong for Mr. Jackson to accept that? Uh, that's a judgment call, um, but he chose not to do that because he knew it would look wrong, and that violates the ethics ordinance. And that's exactly what the ethics ordinance in that point is meant to clarify. You don't have to actually do wrong to violate that ordinance, you have to know that it looked wrong for you to do what you were doing, and you admitted that, in fact, that you knew that, and it's the reason that you had, uh, the city attorney write, um, legal papers to put an easement on your property, he was paid for that out of taxpayer money, and it was all to protect you unjustly. So, um, my understanding is that you plan to talk about this after I'm done talking, and, uh, if for any reason this has to do with you claiming that you would like to file a lawsuit against me, that will be welcome, um, because nothing that I said was untrue. Every piece of paper that the city provided said that was what was on your property was a lateral line, and that was not altered whatsoever in any paperwork. The only thing was altered was by city employees coming up here and lying after the fact.
They did not lie.
And saying that, and saying that they changed their mind about how they felt about sewer pipes. Feelings about sewer pipes should maybe be written in poetry, but was written in actual paperwork, what it actually was, it's a lateral line.
Okay. Betty Wild?
Okay, number one, nobody lied in here that night with you. Number two, if you don't know the difference in a lateral line and a main sewer line, then that doesn't show very much for you. You had maps that dated back to nineteen fifty showing where the city's main line crossed my property to hook the guy on that lived next door to me. I didn't put the line there, I didn't move out there until seventy-seven. I had no reason to even ask where the line was, it was forever before I even knew it was in the government. I showed the ethics board, they had pictures, and one that was on the ethics board, he had questions about it. Well, had it been my lateral line, there would have been dirt disturbed up next to my house. There was not even a blade of grass disturbed. Uh, you, you couldn't see that. And you have been on me since day one. It's not about the sewer line, it's just because you could pick up people and get by with it. So, as far as what you want to do, honey, you go for it, 'cause I'm ready for it.
Okay. Betty, you have an announcement as well?
You what?
You have an announcement.
I have it. I just have it.
Oh, it's happening, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank everybody, or, we have the clothes giveaway on Saturday, which was good, and I thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to have space in order to keep these clothing over the year, and everybody that donated something, I thank you, and the people that came and got something, they thank us for having the clothes giveaway. So, it will be an annual event. I did have people to ask for blankets, so if you have some, maybe get something for Christmas, we'll get rid of some old, let me know, 'cause they'll be asking for some next year, and thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I have another question for her. For Miss Corpin. Would you mind to reveal to people that you're working for?
Oh, I would.
Since you're practicing law without a license, would you like to include them?
And now you have just accused me publicly of a crime, so thank you very much.
You are so welcome, honey. Why didn't you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I had a question about, about the, uh, about why you're trying to charge us twelve thousand dollars, and my understanding, all these meetings are illegal from May to March. I don't understand why you're trying to charge us up twelve thousand dollars, how you even come at that, this number, and do you think that it's right for, to ask the citizens, these people in the audience, the people that pay taxes here, to fork over twelve thousand dollars for you just because you think we're having meetings illegal?
Would you like for me to answer that?
That is absolutely ridiculous.
Would you like for me to answer that?
And the actual, the actual concern here is your motivation and what you're doing here in Statham. And, and when you scrape it all back, your hyper-litigious behavior is motivated by nothing more than money. It's, it's printed out right here. You don't care about the citizens, you don't care about the community, all you care about you is, is you and your checkbook.
If you'd like to know.
And I want everybody in Statham to know what you're about.
You just asked me a question, so now I'm going to answer it.
Okay, go ahead.
Number one, the Georgia Open Meetings Act says that those fines should be against you individually, Mr. McCormick, and that they should be paid to Barrow County, not to me. So, this is not about my, my checkbook. That money, if that goes to court, can come directly out of each one of your part pockets, minus Ms. Crowley because she wasn't a member, directly out of your pocket and directly into the coffers of Barrow County, not me.
Yeah, you're, you're actually, this, this suit, uh, is between you and the city, not between the county and the city.
Right, and what you don't understand.
You're representing, you're saying that you're going to give the money that you win to the county.
Not giving, no, not giving. It's, it's automatic. It's like it's on the map.
Okay, that's, that's the end, thank you.
So he had a question, and I'm going to answer it.
Thomas, you've answered it, thank you. Uh, Thomas, did we have one in session?
Thank you, I am going to answer it. So you asked the reason for that? It was three percent of what the city made pass.
Okay, and a second? All four? Thank you.
Good job. See what you would, if you were given, and it would explain everything that's on there. Hey, while the camera is still rolling, I'm going to point out that's an illegal executive session. They didn't take a vote to go into that. So there you go. They must have done it very poorly.
And now everyone's here, they asked for a motion, they had a second, and they took the motion. They did.
Okay, but they did.
Sit right here, watch.
They must have done it while they were talking.
I'm not in favor of a city that, or they took.
Yeah, we needed to, uh, say what the purpose of the executive session was.
We need a motion to go into executive session. They did.
They did.
They did.
Uh, and the motion was. State the reasons.
Oh, not the reason, but you did state the motion.
Okay, I'll forward again. Okay, thank you.
Just confirm that you know. Then if they voted on it, they did, they did it properly, and they have a term of service. Exactly. And he chooses not to.
No, they're in executive session.
That's not, that's not all of the people that I have.
They came out and they did correct it.
Corrected it.
By announcing what they think is such people. I mean, that's, that's reasonable. An error correction. I don't see the problem with that, but I see.
That's fair enough, that's fair enough, but there are plenty of things that they're wanting repeatedly, knowingly, over and over again. And there'll be another one when they come out of this. We had another, another five things that they never learned about. And again, I don't want to give this money to someone out of tax, to somebody else, because it's a common statement. Since before that.
He looked on for nine. He, he used to think that they could. Because we, because I have time, when I was, I was a real young man. Said I'm writing for Robert Brooks, except he was drunk.
I don't know that he was.
He was drunk. Yeah, I brought. Yeah, I was a teenager.
Like the writing, okay, new session, correct whatever errors they are, and run this according to the policy.
That's a meeting, it's a mark, it's a one by four minute. That's a misconception.
But if you follow the officer's orders, you give, you give the opportunity for everyone to.
Has, uh, has the dam been certified? All the money, all the money they talked about was early on, uh, for rebuilding the dam. Okay, we're taking the dam to the dam, but they ought to be able to try, they should be able to provide little samples of the dam. Okay, that have been taken, certified, the dam is structurally sound, okay? Yes, the dam, the sewer line being buried in, uh, buried in the dam is not.
Yes, it is. According to the Georgia Department of National Resources Guide, that was part of this, that they're hearing. It can't be reworked on that.
I thought the sewer line was buried across the street, I was a fool.
They just said that it was in the dam, I don't know, that's.
I mean, that's what I was told, or that's what I was, what I understand.
You said, well, you said, right? Said that the, the sewer pipe is in the dam. It may be a space in the dam, I, I don't know. But whatever it is, they should be required to supply core samples of the dam, confirming its validity and, and solvency, okay? Because all you gotta do is go down into Atlanta, and where subdivision were built around an existing, an existing, uh, lake or pond, okay? And the dam, the dam, uh, what you call rich, it flooded all the houses out, and the insurance didn't cover it, because they did, there was no flooding chance in that particular area, because it's not necessarily a floodway. Mr. Cross, if this comes for us anywhere. I'm asking the mound.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. But there's mandates, there's mandates that are required mechanically, okay, that are, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pass this without.